Are you reminding people on the signature file already?
No.
Okay, um, in that case, we are.
Yeah, you can. Sorry.
We want to do.
Sorry, that's somebody on the work section.
Board members, just be sure that you come into the town hall to check out the signature files. There's some items for your signatures. Okay. Are we just going to go right to the? Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to entertain a motion to go to non-public for, to discuss the planning and development review committee update and recommendations by the committee. And I need a motion to go into non-public in accordance with RSA 91A colon 3, Roman numeral 2. What's highlighted here, hiring B. Is there?
So moved.
Mary Ann moved. Is there, who's seconded?
Neil.
Okay, Neil seconded. Mary Ann, your vote? Zach? John?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Bill, aye, we're in non-public. So I guess we're opening it. All right, John seconds, Mary Ann, your vote?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Zach?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Bill, aye, nice habit.
I just need to text Scott Whedon, so if you wouldn't mind just skipping over that one for a minute.
Okay.
Put him here.
So you can go to the email from Crystal.
What about, what's the deal on the budget committee to meet with department heads? It's just, that's just an item to state? The recommended dates for budget committee to meet with department heads are 11/16, 11/30 and 12/7?
Yeah, the board doesn't, the department heads and the budget committee decide when they can meet. So it's just letting you guys know that they're going to meet them.
Okay.
Those are dates that they could pick to meet.
All right, and so before we can get to Scott, we have a letter from Crystal Dial regarding the Marine Corps flag, flying the Marine Corps flag at Town Common for November 10th and Veterans Day. And she's requesting permission to fly the Marine Corps flag at the Town Common. She's a Marine Corps veteran and lives in the town. November 10th is the Marine Corps birthday and would like to fly in the common to represent that and to represent all Marine Corps veterans and families, also to Marine Corps veteran families, loved ones who may have lost their lives. And she's asking to go about this, so is there any concern or you want to discuss it?
I think it would be very good and very appropriate.
November 11th is Veterans Day.
Yes, but it's, I guess the.
The 10th is the birthday of the Marine Corps.
Right.
She'd like to fly it both days and she would just like the board's support for her to do so.
Yeah. I, I think this is great, totally something we should do. I do wonder on the Veterans Day, are we going to get any objections about not reflecting other branches of the military and making it only, like, it makes a lot of sense on the 10th. And maybe we just carry it through and a different branch could ask us in future years or whatever, but I do, I just want to acknowledge that we are focusing on the Marine Corps and maybe not the other branches of the military on Veterans Day.
Well, speaking for the Air Force, it'd be fine.
Entire military branch of the Air Force, nice job.
Yeah, that's actually a valid, was a valid statement too, yeah.
Yes.
Just to respect one Marine Corps, but I don't know, and is there a consensus on that or?
I mean, considering none of the others have come forward, I, I don't have like a hard objection to it or anything. It just was more of a, we could hear, we could hear citizenry say something.
Yeah, I, I think I'd go along with not displaying it on Veterans Day and just doing the 10th.
Would we switch it over to like an American flag? Because this is the Town Common, we don't generally fly a flag.
We don't generally fly a flag and we can do the birthday on the 10th, the Marine Corps birthday.
Yeah.
On the 10th and just have them take it down for the 11th and just honor all veterans on the 11th.
All right, does that sound good for everybody?
Yep.
Any objections or? I don't think we need a motion, so we'll just go ahead and respond to her that the 10th would be great. And we'll be proud of our Marine Corps birthday. All right. Scott Whedon has joined us.
Good evening, how are you all?
Fine.
Doing well, yourself?
Very well.
You're going to discuss the screening certification form and the COVID illness policy?
Yes, and if you'd like me to start, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, please go for it.
Okay, so as I've been looking into COVID-19 and looking at the town policies and reviewing what Kathy had put out back in April with regards to compensation policy change in regards to the Families First Coronavirus Act, I started thinking a little bit more about and looking at the CDC guidelines, looking at the Department of Health and Human Services guidelines, as well as guidance sets we've received from Primex, our liability and workers' compensation carrier. And diving in a little bit further into the Families First Coronavirus Act, it seemed that we probably should have some type of a process policy in place with regards to employees coming into work. And I think it's keeping in, in keeping with the CDC guidelines and the Safer at Home 2.0 and that the town needs to do everything we can to prevent and slow COVID-19 spread in the workplace. And I think when we look at that, we look at really three factors that get into play. Number one, contact with others. Number two, physical proximity of staff working in the town office or other departments, whether they're at the police department and you've got dispatch, you've got the officers going into dispatch, or whether in the firehouse with folks circulating around the table in the firehouse and coming together. And I think that the third piece is exposure to disease and infection, which can happen obviously in the firehouse or in any town building that we have with staff. And when I look at the trends over the last couple of weeks of what's going on in Plymouth and what's going on around in some of our neighboring communities and looking at the numbers that affect Plymouth today with regards to, if we look at Grafton County in a whole, we have had 316 cases and there's been nine hospitalized and we've had one death. That doesn't make it sound so bad, but when we really look at what active cases we have in Grafton County, we currently as of today have 95 active cases, 73 of those are still under investigation. And knowing that this morning in the report that we got from Department of Health and Human Services, Plymouth has 35 of those 73 cases in Grafton County, which means we have 36.8% of the cases that are located within all of Grafton County. The only one in the North Country that comes close to where Plymouth is today is Berlin with the outbreak that they've had over the past couple of weeks. So keeping that in mind and thinking about how we can keep our employees safe and do everything that we possibly can do, we've put together a screening form, a daily screening form that staff would use when coming into work. And like I said, it's, it's in compliance with the Safer at Home 2.0 with the universal guidelines for employees. It's in, it's in, it's, it's a guidance that we've received from Primex as well as DHHS in CDC. So these are the important questions that must be asked when someone comes in. It's a mandatory piece if the board selected to and it's a confidential piece that would be submitted to the town manager or to the Human Resource Director, which can be done electronically if the form's made electronic or it can be done in hard copy to them. So that was the first piece that we developed. And when I say we developed, working with Anne and Kathy and Eileen as well as Tom and Steve for input with regards to their feelings on how this would move forward and what they're currently doing in their respective departments today, which in both the police department and the fire department, they do have a screening form when you walk into the department. Temperature is taken and it's noted on a, I'll say, an Excel spreadsheet that's handwritten. And the next piece we go into is the COVID-19 policy. And this really runs right in conjunction with the Families First Coronavirus Act that is in place but does expire December 31st, 2020. I would assume, maybe that's not the right word, but I would expect that that would be extended past December 31st, 2020, based on where the trends are, not only here in New Hampshire but across the country and rising in very high, high rates. So the policy really covers as a guideline to ensure that we're doing all the best that we can do as the town of Plymouth to stop the spread of COVID-19 within our workplace and making sure that we create a healthy work environment and keep our employees and our families as safe as possible. And these guidelines are put in place based on the recommendations that we have and it's subject to change. I mean, we don't know what the environment of this disease, this infection is going to happen after a vaccination is dispersed. I mean, we've got positive information today from Pfizer, I'm sure as everyone saw, that they feel their vaccination is 90% successful with Johnson &amp; Johnson following right behind them in a trial process. So these are the pieces that we've put together. The one outstanding piece that is not in here today and I think it needs to have conversation is when is an employee allowed to come back to work? And I can tell you that the Primex recommendations are after they've been released by their healthcare providers or 10 days from the last symptom that they experienced. But that's up for discussion because we've never really talked about, as far as I know, when an employee is allowed to come back to work after either being exposed to COVID-19 or testing positive for COVID-19. I think the daily screening form is pretty straightforward and simple and they report to the town manager and their department head in the event that they have any of these symptoms that are listed, at which point I think Kathy or any department head makes that determination if they need to be tested or they need to see their healthcare provider. So that's where we are today based on the information that I've been able to track down and the guidance that's been provided by Primex. I did speak to them yes, Friday with regards to these guidelines and asked them about the return to work and they stick by that 10 days or are being released by a healthcare provider.
All right, so are you seeking comment or?
Absolutely, I think Bill, the best thing to do is have a conversation, people's concerns or comments. And if there's follow-up that I need to take away from the table and research and provide additional answers, I am absolutely happy to do that.
Scott, or Kathy, do we track people who actually come into the town hall as well, contact information?
They all fill out one of those papers, is there a place on there for their address or anything? Probably not.
No, it just.
Place for their name and they take their temperature and they sign that that's what it is. So we have their names, so if we need to, you know, we know who they are, so.
Right, I just think as a restaurant now, we're required to take name and phone number. I was wondering if we should do the same with the phone number then?
We can add the phone number too.
Hey, so this appendix two, I mean, it's probably going to be like modified fairly frequently. So maybe this should be like an effective date and expiry date and you know, make sure that it's modified correctly so that, you know, it's replaced in the personnel manual.
I would absolutely agree with that, that it needs, it's, it's a living document and needs to be updated when new guidance is received, absolutely.
To include, I guess, insertion of back to work, you know, you're 10 days after symptoms are released by healthcare provider or something.
Right.
And the employees who have traveled in the prior 14 days outside of New Hampshire, is that now mandated that they should, you know, for, I guess Maine, Massachusetts, Connecticut, Rhode Island, Vermont used to be kind of exempt for self-quarantining.
So it says New Hampshire, Vermont, Maine, Massachusetts, Connecticut or Rhode Island, so you can travel in all those states.
All right, I guess, sorry about that.
You just can't travel anywhere else.
Correct, it's traveling outside of the New England states that unless identified as an essential worker, which the board can identify those individuals based on classification, they would have to quarantine for 14 days upon returning to work for the town of Plymouth.
Okay.
Scott, are you recommending that they approve this policy as written tonight?
Or with the amendment?
And then we can come back in two weeks with the amendment once it's decided how to bring an employee back? So at least we can get this going?
Which, whatever the wish of the board is, I'm happy to move in any direction. I think we definitely should have the screening, the daily screening form in place. That really is protection for everybody in one of the town buildings, the policy. If they wanted to add that tonight, we could amend that and have a new copy to them and include it in that.
I have a question. I'm, I'm really concerned about individuals that are asymptomatic. And that, yeah, I, I see that as a really difficult aspect of this screening process.
Neil, you're absolutely, you're absolutely correct, asymptomatic is a tough, a tough situation. But in the Safer at Home 2.0 guidelines, there's charting and process on how they're handled. But until someone comes in contact or close contact or is diagnosed with COVID-19, we will have those individuals walking around each and every day, you're absolutely correct.
Scott, are all the cases in, in the Plymouth area, are those all with the university and Beckett School?
They are not, John, they're, I, I will say a majority of them are. I've been in close contact with the Beckett School, spoke to them last Friday afternoon at 3 o'clock. Rachel Umberger, who is the executive director. And Friday afternoon as of 3 o'clock, every student had tested negative, although they were still being quarantined. They had six staff members that tested positive that unfortunately decided to have a Halloween party on the 31st. Those six staff members are currently isolated in Plymouth, Meredith and Ashland in their respective homes. So we've tried to stay right on top of the Beckett School and Marlin, as always, has been very helpful. We only had three positive cases at the university last week and that's between staff, faculty and students, so that number has come down. So there are other members of the community that have tested positive for COVID-19.
There was another case at the high school again today. Is, is that from the town of Plymouth or one of the surrounding, you know, it's a regional high school, so.
That I currently don't know, Zach, I tried to get ahold of Kyla this afternoon, but unfortunately, I mean, she was busy with getting the press release at 3 o'clock and we were supposed to talk a little bit more about the Beckett School because there's some relationship there as well. But I'll have more follow-up on that in the morning, so I don't know if that is actually a student that resides in the town of Plymouth.
Does the university test all the students and staff and faculty once a week?
They're testing anywhere between 3,400 and 3,800 students, faculty and staff a week. Is that the entire population? No.
It's the vast majority of the population that's on campus though.
Correct.
So, so some of the people aren't really on the campus? They're on Zoom or something like that?
There are remote students at the university, yeah.
A lot of the addresses that we see are within the campus, but it could be in off-campus housing.
And Marlin will speak later on during the meeting, so you can query him then.
I don't think Marlin's able to attend tonight, I think he sent us a message saying he wasn't able to attend.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't get that message.
Yeah, he sent it shortly after the link you sent out Kathy this afternoon.
Okay.
Scott, are there any other recommended, I mean, you've, you've got this good set of revisions to our employee policies. We as a board obviously passed a mask ordinance earlier in the year. Are there other things that you could see us doing that would be helpful? Is, is there any other recommendations that, or anything we can do to help the community?
Yeah, Zach, I, I think, you know, with the mask policy and with the board implementing a daily screening certification form and a policy, those are all good steps, but I think the most important thing we can do is continue to create messaging. And I've been working with Tommy and try to get a message out every week with regards to COVID-19, with regards to staying home if you're sick, with regards to social distancing, physical distancing. And I've just drafted another message that we'll use just prior to Thanksgiving with regards to being safe and healthy around the holidays that we'll get out. But I think messaging is the number one thing and being consistent with the messaging that we're providing to the residents of Plymouth and those that visit Plymouth and the students. And I know Marlin has been very receptive to thoughts and ideas that we've bounced back and forth with regards to maybe a short video message to the students next week with regards to staying in your dorm room if you're sick, reporting to the university if you're sick, but I really think that's going to be the key is because, you know, we talk.
Patience.
Scott.
Awesome.
How about those Red Sox?
Patriots tonight, if you can stand it.
No, I can't stand it.
Yeah, yeah.
Couldn't be worse than the Bucks.
Sweden is frozen, so. What do you present it to you?
I think it's great, in fact, the one concern I have with the, with our process of how when we come into town hall, you know, we zap our forehead, we fill out the form and then stick it in the missy's cubby.
Yep.
I guess that's adequate, unfortunately, in fact, I wasn't aware that I was supposed to sanitize the thermometer after I checked my temperature.
You signed saying that you sanitized it.
Is that statement on the one that's here?
It is.
All right, so there you go. That'll be good for now.
So we'll add phone number?
Yep.
Yeah.
Is that what, okay.
Yeah.
And then what about the return to work, do we want to do some more research on that? To get the right wording in there and we'll present it again at the next meeting, but if we can present a preliminary policy for now?
You.
Get it out there?
Might just go ahead and insert the language that he said, 10 days after symptoms, you know, subside or released by a healthcare provider.
Yep. 10 days after final, after last symptom?
10 days from the last symptom.
Yep. Last symptom.
Or released, or, or a release by your healthcare provider.
And that goes for all employees, whether you're an essential employee or a town office employee or, I mean, it's going to go right across the board, police or fire, town office, everybody.
Should include everybody.
Released.
And so if that language is inserted, then if there's any modification of that, then we can
Okay.
See at the next meeting or whatever.
We'll add that and then we'll get these departments.
Oh good, he's back.
Hi Scott.
Sorry about that, I just got disconnected real quick.
Yeah, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
What are, what are your feelings about allowing a religious exemption for mask wearing?
That's an issue.
Now, there have been rulings that it's not, two things is, it, it's public health as, as well as, as long as you're not, what's the word, as long as you're not excluding based on religion, then it, it's not, then you can, then it's fine. As long as you're not saying, you know, if you're XYZ religion, then you have to wear a mask. If you're saying that, then it's, oh my God, I can't think of the word, discrimination. If you're not pointing out a particular religion, it's not discrimination. According to my research and findings in a particular case in Florida.
Okay.
Have there been any cases in New Hampshire?
Of what? Of religious exemptions?
People coming forward with petitions or complaints.
Well, Plymouth.
Yeah. So we're going to, we're going to be the case law for New Hampshire.
I'm, I'm sure other towns too, you know, they have.
Yeah. It's a statement in the National Law Review as well, goes to much more detail.
If, if it's helpful, the Health Officers Association is having a webinar on Thursday, which I plan to attend with regards to face coverings. And I know there's a lot of towns that are currently looking to implement a policy as Plymouth has, so I know they're going to have a lot of discussion with regards to that. I do have three links that I can send around that talk about face coverings, both from the CDC perspective, Department of Health and Human Services and the Fairly, it's some act and I'm not, I'm not absolutely positive of the name of the act right now, but I can send those to the town office to be distributed to everybody so you can take a look at those. But the webinar is Thursday morning at 11 o'clock.
Okay. Well, actually, if we can send, send some links around, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
So saying that it's against your religion is a little bit different than saying it's because I have a medical condition. You know?
Yes.
So it's a little harder to prove that, you know, my religion won't allow me, I mean, I don't know how you just.
So once again, my understanding was public health is, is one of the big concerns, but then also as long as you're not targeting a specific religion as opposed to saying we're requiring it from everybody, then it's not discrimination.
True.
As, as I understand it, our mask ordinance is kind of a minimum standard for the community. And if a business or an institution decides that they want to have a more restrictive standard, that, that's not, you know, that, that's not something that, that we have anything to do with. They have a right to do that in their own, in their own place of business or, or in their institution, whatever facility they have. Does that sound right?
Same, yeah, businesses can have a more strict, I mean, stricter, you know, mask ordinance, so, yeah, yes, they can. But they have to meet a minimum of our, our ordinance. So that's correct. And yeah, I'd have a concern about allowing for a religious exemption when what are you going to have, require a card-carrying Episcopalian or something to be allowed to, you know, so it just doesn't seem. And I guess there was also a concern about like not being able to see a face and your mouth or whatever. I'm thinking there are, well, I sent a link to Amazon masks that have, you know, mouths exposed and a clear window. So if you have that concern, there is a solution. So if you have that concern, there is a solution. But.
What about if you have a shield?
It's not adequate.
No.
No. So, you know, a shield with a cloth mask or something would be adequate, but. Yeah.
Shield is not adequate by themselves?
No.
Well, that's the way Bob Clay was at election day. He didn't have a mask on. He just had the shield.
I thought he had a mask on as well.
That was true at the primary, but I thought this, during this election, he was wearing both.
I didn't see, I didn't see him wearing both. Maybe he was. I just thought he had the shield.
I know later in the evening, he took his shield off and he was definitely wearing a mask while we were.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think he switched, I think he switched between the two, but I don't know.
I think he, he has to communicate and that kind of poses a problem.
Yeah. Well, that's why I was saying, I, I believe he, for a long period of time and having to talk to people and them understand. And not have an issue, he was just using the shield. And I thought the reason they were using the shield is the shield was, we considered equivalent to a mask. But I'm hearing different now, so.
That's actually a good question, John. I've seen it in the, at Hannaford's as well. Some workers just wearing the mask and.
Yeah, there was a, a personnel issue in Hannaford because one of the staff wore a shield only and they were required to, to also wear. In addition to the shield, a cloth mask or a cloth mask, but the shield wasn't adequate and complying.
Well, yeah, you know, for what it's worth, at, at the election we had the other day. It seemed like everybody went along. Everything went very smoothly.
Yeah, we had very few objections outside to the, to the requirement. I think there was. There was only, only two people who, who really pushed to. You know, for their own personal reasons to, to do their vote outside. We had, I think, one or two people who had contacted us in advance with, you know, deficiency issues that, that we let. Process outside, but, but I think you're right, Neil. Most people just kind of. Chose to do what they, you know, what we had asked of them and what we think is safest.
I mean, I think from a community perspective, my wife and I walk a lot around the downtown area and around the college. And I will say that 90% of the people are very respectful of putting a mask up when they come in contact with somebody. I mean, the post office, I, I have not seen anybody going to the post office without a mask. Going into the different stores, the restaurants, people always have masks on. And I think since the college did a big reminder a week and a half ago. That, you know, we walk across the bridge over into Holderness, down around the fieldhouse, the Allwell Center. And the students are very good about having their mask on. When they come in contact with you anywhere down around that area. So I, you know, it's, it's diligence, it's communication, it's messaging. To make sure that we're standing on top of it to show how important this is. And I know people don't like to wear a mask and I know people are tired of it, but the scientific background says a mask does help. Does it prevent everything? Absolutely not, but it does help spread and especially the community spread of COVID-19.
I, I don't mean to be a naysayer, Scott. My wife works in the, in the library and she unfortunately is constantly policing. And she finds a lot of cases where she tells they, they put the mask on and as soon as she walks away. They take the mask off. Very frustrating for them.
Yeah, and that's at the university library, is that right?
Yes, yes.
I, I mean, admittedly, that is a community that's being tested every week and is. Hopefully as close a community as possible. Now, is that ideal? No, it's not, but in terms of risky behaviors, it, it. It's probably not the worst thing.
I know, but it just starts something, right?
It does. And, you know, everybody's got fatigue on this. Everybody wants to, everyone wants this to be over.
Nobody wants to get sick either.
Hurried influences, or, you know, hurried meaning is not probably the best route to go. Okay. Well. Thanks, Scott. What, what we kind of decided when you were down for a little bit was to include the language of coming back to work. To insert 10 days or permission from your healthcare provider.
And a phone number on the app.
Oh, and a phone, yeah, phone number on the sheet.
I can, Kathy and Ann, I'll send that language from the Primex document down to you so it models what they have for that.
Thank you.
All right.
Want to do a motion to accept that in the policy?
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Sure. Ann's requesting a motion to request a new policy. To accept.
So moved.
All right, Zach moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Marianne seconds. Neil, your vote?
Aye.
Marianne?
Aye.
Zach?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Bill, aye. Thanks, Scott.
Yes, and, and what I'll do, Bill, is I will send those links down with regards to the face mask and I will follow up with an email. After the health officer's training on Thursday.
All right, much appreciated. Thank you very much. All righty. The next item, accept the letter of resignation with regrets from Jim Blake. And we have in our packets a letter of resignation from, from Jim. And actually. The effective date will be February 28th, 2021. And that's just basically to inform you.
They should, they should vote to accept this letter of resignation.
Okay. In that case, is there a motion to accept Jim's letter of resignation?
So move.
John moves, Neil seconds. Zach, your vote? Oh, any discussion? Goodness gracious. Is there any discussion? No, seeing none. Zach, your vote?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Marianne?
Aye.
Bill, aye. Well, that is it for the work session. Any other items that anybody would like to bring up for the next five minutes or so?
Will, will we, we be showing some form of appreciation to Jim?
Parks and Rec is going to, Parks and Rec is going to have something, they're going to do something and they will send invitations to all of us. So that we can say goodbye to Jim and thank him.
How long has he been with the town?
30 years?
30, 35, 35 years, I believe.
Yeah.
Been running.
Yeah, good, very good run. So if you didn't get my email. Brian Murphy is going to come back as our building inspector. He'll be coming in two days a week. To do building inspections for us until we can actually find somebody to fill the position.
That, that includes code enforcement?
Now, Jules will do the code enforcement and if she needs help from Brian, Brian will give her the help that she needs. But she does have like that code enforcement experience behind her, from what I understand, so. With him doing building inspections.
They're going to work as a team.
They're going to work as a team.
Well, that's good.
Do we have any applicants for the building inspector?
We've had a lot of applicants. Nobody has any experience in it as I don't, I can't remember who I was telling. In one of the applications, one of the people worked as the Wolfman up at Clark's Trading Post, so that was his experience, but. I, I'd be kind of afraid of him if he came to my house.
I think that, I think that means requirements for select board if I'm.
So, yeah, we have, we had one really good one. He, he's actually from Warren and he was very, very good and we really wanted him. But when I talked to him after the fact, he said he really needed a full-time job with benefits, so he didn't want to take the part-time. So when we get economic development going, we'll need a full-timer, then we can go back after him.
Yes.
All right. You got 557. So you, you also include the town reports.
That was just, oh yeah, the town, the town report memo, I think everybody got one. We need submissions by the end of the year, what the select board usually does, unless one person, the chair, wants to write it all.
I'll, I'll definitely draft something.
So the select board usually maybe takes like one-fifth each and does that portion only. You know, of what happened during those months. And submits it all to, and we put it all together as the selectmen's report, so. You can, you, you can decide how you want.
When's the deadline?